What we're gonna do with each candidate is just have them give us a little bit of background as to what their experiences are, qualifications for the position, and we'll go from there.
Alright, I'm not sure an hour would cover it, but I've been through the whole gambit of the power industry. A while back, I became a groundman in the electrical trade. From there, I went into the apprenticeship program, and I won't say how many years back. And in the apprenticeship, you find out that when you climb up a couple pigs on a pole or the tower, you're not at the work yet. You have to get all the way to the top. So from there, I went through the apprenticeship, became a German lineman. And I did that for a while, then the economy kinda went downhill, and my children wanted to eat, so I joined the Navy. In the interim of joining the Navy with an electrical background, they put me as a gas turbine technician. And so I went through the naval training, which is probably some of the best in the world. Cause they give you eight hours a day, forty, or you know, five days a week, forty hours a week, just nothing but classroom and on-the-job training, and they teach you everything. So I learned all about the gas turbines, the combustion turbines, the generation of it, and I moved on up the chain as management, and I was in charge of a lot of various programs, a lot of people. At one time, I was in charge of, I was actually the most senior enlisted engineer onboard, which meant I was in charge of the entire engineering division, which included not only the gas turbine, the generation, the main propulsion, but also the damage control and the, all the ancillary equipment and everything else that went along with it. The electricians, the engineers, the damage control men, I was the person in charge of all that. I was actually between them and the CO, the commanding officer. And from there, I had transferred quite a few times off many different ships, but they had seeked me, they sought me out and wanted me on the engineering training team, the afloat training team, which meant that I was one of the teams that went around to all these different ships and actually trained the trainers. We would assess the situation on the ship, what they were doing, how they were doing everything, and then we would train the trainers on how they could train the crew, which is quite an honor. And that's usually a two-to-three-year tour, but that was on the east coast. What they did after that, they moved me to be west coast, in the far west, in Hawaii, and I trained or assisted in training those ships on that coast. So from there, I was on almost every ship in the Navy, which is quite a feat. And I received the Navy combination medal for that service. I was also the first one ever in that particular field to qualify as a master training specialist. And then I was, as the military goes, they'll put you in positions and jobs where you have no experience. So they did that, and I came through those in-flight colors. They made me the top cop, the chief of security on Dan Neck Naval Base. I was in charge of 2,200 personnel. I was also a safety manager, and that is another 2,000 people and everything that went along with that as far as safety. They sent me to many different schools for that, but I didn't stop there. During that time in the military, I decided, well, I might as well get a little education, you know? Cause I had reached, actually reached my terminal pay grade, they call it, the highest I could go in nine years. So I decided to go for a bachelor's degree, which I received, and I said, well, I'll just go on. And went to a master's degree and finally a doctorate in business administration. And I did all of this while I was serving in the, in the military. So my, my wife was kind of, you know, by herself. She'd bring me coffee at four in the morning so I could keep going. But I, I received that, and I'm glad I did because that's a, had a lot of knowledge behind that. And once I retired, and this was all in, actually in the power generation field. When I retired from Navy, Booth Allen Hamilton actually sought me out to be a senior consultant. They had seen my background, they saw that I was no longer in the Navy, and the United States government sold four Navy ships to Taiwan. Said, well, we need somebody to teach Taiwan sailors how to, how to sail them. So for two years, I taught roughly 1,200 Taiwanese sailors the, how to operate, maintain the, the whole propulsion aspect of the Navy ships. From the power generation, which is actually the same turbines we use here, to the main propulsion, which is a bigger turbine, and everything that goes along with it. You have all the pumps and the boilers and the, yeah, this and that. And I did that for two years, and there I was deemed as a subject matter expert, which is also quite an honor. Yeah, I don't like to toot my own horn, but sometimes you do. Now, after that, I went back into the electrical field, power generation, working at power plants, working at substations, and as a German lineman. And through most of those, I was the foreman or general foreman, which was one in charge. I had been in leadership roles before. The Navy does that to you, they put you in a leadership role and say, hey, you either sink or swim. Well, I'm a sailor, I swim. So I can go, I can actually convert to whatever position I'm in. See, here at Low Light and Power, probably know me as a generation guy. That's because that's my position then. I do clean up, you know? And I can switch roles. Cause you know, during that time, I also helped out the lineman a few times when I storm worked with him, and when I was doing that, I was a German lineman. You know, that's my role at the time. So I convert to what I'm doing, you know, whatever aspect. And as an employee of Low Light and Power, I work for Low Light and Power. I work for the board directors here, I work for the ex-general manager, and I do whatever it takes. If it takes to do one thing or another, who signs my paycheck? That's who I work for. My job description doesn't necessarily mean that's the only thing I do. So I, I am fully capable of what I'm going for. I don't apply to anything unless I actually apply to it and I know that I can do the job. And there are other, you know, as far as the community, which I know Low Light and Power after being around for 120 years, it's not going, it's not going anyplace. So I, myself, grew up in Lowell, and it's a community I loved back then. I moved away for like 30 years in the Navy and then around the country, been around the world twice. I don't know how many other countries I stepped foot in, but I think enough of the community of Lowell that I am back here, and this is where I'm gonna be. So whatever it takes to, for community involvement to make Low Light and Power look even better, I know it's got a good foundation from the last general manager, and it's going in the right direction. And I will continue to push it in that direction. If you have anything else, that's just a brief description.
That's impressive.
Thanks. I know, I'm gonna ask a couple questions, and I'm gonna, we kinda have a, we started out with a, with a script and everything, and we're gonna, I'm gonna go off that a little bit with you, because some of them, I think, you know, you're already here, you're an employee of Low Light and Power, so some things that I, you know, that really don't make a lot of sense to me to ask you about that. A couple things, one is what major, I mean, accomplishment that you're most proud of before you came to Low Light and Power? And number two is, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, what would you do, how would you handle, is there anything different, whether it be style or things that have happened in the past, in the recent years, since you've been employed here, that you would do different than what our previous general manager did?
I think as far as doing things different, there's always a little bit of differences. I think, I think the way things progressed, the previous general manager did an excellent job. I may do things in maybe a different order or something like that, it's all situational. You know, when a situation arises, then you handle it, you know, you don't let it, let it fester and...
Can you give me a specific that, that you might do, that you would have done differently than, than Greg? And I know he's sitting here, but that's, those are, I mean, in the months and years to follow, there's certainly gonna be things that you're gonna have to answer to the board or answer to the community, and so, you know, it's just a fact of life. So give me a specific that you might have handled differently than our current general man, our previous general manager? If you can think of anything. If you can't, then that's fine.
Well, there's only one thing that I can think of right now, and that's when we purchased the two combustion turbines, I might have looked for more similarities between them because they are completely, completely different.
Okay.
And other than that, you know, I think, I think he had the employees in mind and the community in mind, as well as the board of directors in mind when he made decisions. You know, I've been, I've been in these positions, you know, I've been down there on a, on a deck plate, so to speak, not knowing what went on in the office. I've been in the office, and people in there cannot run a business without, the rest of them, the rest of them can't run a business, and it's all a team, and I believe that's what he looked at, and that's what I plan on looking at, is everyone together as, as well as a community, because we serve the community. And when the lights stay on, everybody's happy, they don't know why.
So how would you, what things would you implement that would enhance that team concept or that team feeling every, you know?
Uh, what would be implemented?
I think that speaks a little bit to your management style, kind of, how your management style is.
Well, I, I think, I think we're doing pretty good. I think I would be involved with what's going on in the different areas. I would, I would be involved, well, especially in the, in the line work because I know that, and I would also be involved in, you know, just spreading myself out and not stay just as the top one, you know? I think, I think it's, it's a community inside. See, you have your outside customers, but your number one customer is actually still the employee. If you don't take care of the employee, the employee won't take care of the other customers if they, or director isn't, isn't happy. See, I can, I can make the decisions, but I may not make the correct one, that's why you are here, to make sure that the correct decision is made. And during, during that, when I'm trying to get to a decision, the research that I do, and the research I've been doing, getting supplies and whatnot for the turbines, I do that research, and I can also come up with different things that I may not have seen otherwise. And when, when I present that to Greg, or now Steve, or you guys, then you can see from the outside perspective, you know, where I'm coming from, but also see what I may have, may have overlooked by seeing so much of it. I think just, just involvement in a, in a whole, in a whole gambit of, of the runnings of it.
Can I answer your question?
Well, I mean, I can, I can always come up with a lot more, but I want to let the other...
I just wanted to make sure you're two, do you wanna go, Greg?
Sure.
Kinda go down the list, and then we can start.
My first question, you've kind of addressed that with your, your opening statement about what you've done in the past that would help us with our projects. Second question was, recently Low Light Power ratified a contract with IBEW. What experience do you have solving problems between coworkers and management that would help to prevent future conflicts?
Well, for one, I've been a member of the IBEW for 40 years. I, I know what they're about, and I've also worked on the other side. I know what it's like to clash. I've been in positions in the military of solving problems. I was the, the chief of security on Dan Neck Naval Base, and, and contrary to what people may think, the, the military is made up of everybody, all different races, creeds, and everything from the outside world, so to speak. And there are gangs in the military, they wear their colors, they, they act as gangs, and there has to be a liaison between those and chain of command. Chain of command doesn't always know what's going on. As a senior enlisted, I was the go-between guy from the enlisted to the officer world, which they, they are separate. I have been in those positions of mediation, and I usually have been able to come up with, with solutions that other people haven't been. I was at one time given a group of guys who had been in the train. They were the, the so-called bad guys of the ship. They gave them to me to make sure they worked, and they actually turned out to be very good workers and very good people. See, if you get to their level and understand where they are coming from, there's usually a reason behind it. If you can get to that reason, you can, you can usually sort things out. It's when, when the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing that things happen. If I knew nothing about the board of directors, I wouldn't know that you guys spend so much time and have your own time here. But I've been in different positions, and I, I keep coming through.
Okay. My second question, I'm gonna rob one that Tina had submitted, who isn't here, how have you volunteered in your community?
Many times I have volunteered behind the scenes, not out in the open. Yeah, we, my, my wife and I do have a ministry, and we have, we give to a lot of people and a lot of the community, but people don't see it. You know, we see things that, that others don't see. Now, as, as the general manager, I will, you know, have my Low Light and Power on, I will be involved in the community in aspects that I haven't been. But it's still, it's still, the community to me is what makes it up. And we, we have given to a lot of people who are, who were in need but too proud to ask for it. And when, when you see that happening, all things happen. See, right now, we've been actually babysitting for a single mother who's a waitress who could be on welfare, but she's not. She's out there working, but she can't always find a sitter, and we volunteer that. We do not charge, we actually pay to do it. And that, that's just one aspect of, of what we're doing, and that's, there's others that, you know, very numerous to mention.
So...
Good, thank you.
If I can just follow up on that a little bit, you talked about in your role as your general manager, and that role, it would be a little bit different. So how do you see yourself being engaged in the Lowell community as a general manager? How do you see that being different from the volunteer service that you're doing now?
Well, there's, you know, we have these, these things in the spring and things in the fall where we get together and have, you know, bucket rides and displays of this and that. And I think a little more of that would be, thanks, a little more of the, just, just being out in the community and letting people know that, yeah, we, we do serve the customers, we do serve the community. We are not doing things just for Low Light and Power. We're keeping the race down, we are supplying, we are getting the reliable public power awards. People don't see that, but I think, I think there should be a way that we can show more of that.
Any ideas on how you might do that?
Well, I could, I could have taken it to my house last Christmas when I was out of power for three days, and the lights were on here. Say, hey, you have lights, I don't. No, that's, I wouldn't do that, but, you know, just, just different situations, you know, just, just to show them that yes, they do have it good here.
It's on to me now. Okay, well, based on, I mean, you obviously grew up in the area, and also based on your experience working here, what are the major challenges and opportunities that the Lowell community will experience in the next 10 years, and how would Low Light and Power ensure the most positive outcomes for those?
Well, I think, I think a major one is growth, continued growth. See, things are changing, and we are changing with it. The coal plants are going away, we need to branch out into other areas, and I feel we're doing that. We have the combustion turbines, and they're almost both be functional, operational now, and we're also looking at different sources. You know, there's wind power, there's solar power, and another one that's coming up is energy storage, battery power. We can check into that. And, and think, things of that, so we have to grow, and the community may not think we have to grow because the lights are still on. But if a company doesn't grow, it stagnates. If it stagnates, it dies. And I, I don't think we're ready to die. I think, I think we have a long way to go, and, and the community involvement of explaining what's going on is a, a good, good thing to do. We may, may give out flyers in the bills or any other way we can do it. We have special expos or, you know, stuff like that.
With that, just to follow, with that, where do you, do you see the growth happening inside the city or out in the townships?
I think both, I think both. And I guess I was gonna have to follow up on that, then what, in what ways would the, would the community grow that we would support? Like, how would Light and Power support the community itself growing? Cause I, I mean, I like what you said about the growth part, that, you know, we definitely need to see growth in the community. How can Light and Power, you know, support the growth? You know, we've got the growth for Light and Power you discussed, how would we support the community growing? Like, in what way or what's our role?
What, what I, I think, you know, like, the simple thing is LED lighting, you know, having LED lighting all over the place, pushing people to be more efficient, have more efficiency in their operation, so they're actually using less electricity, which doesn't sound like a, you know, a good business aspect where they use less, so we supply less. But with their using less, then we become more efficient ourselves. And the, you know, having the community that way, because they're going to grow, and people don't like to pay the electric bill. I know, I pay one. But, but I, I, I had all CFL lights, and now I have mostly LED lights, and I can see that bill just, just dropping. And, okay, so I'm not using much, so, but in, in perspective, if it's more efficient then you don't have as much loss. And you, maybe they're not paying as much in, but then we're not paying as much for it, because it's more, more efficient, less loss, you know, running better. And we can invest in, in other areas and bring more efficiency and better, you know, cheaper electric to the customers, so they can afford to grow.
Cool, thanks. And the other question I guess I'll ask is then, in the, in the past five years, what was your greatest professional achievement and also your greatest professional disappointment? And what did you learn from each of those?
That's a tough one.
In some ways, that's the idea, but...
I know, I, I've been, I've been given interviews before, I, I know some of these questions are, don't make sense, but I think, I think the biggest achievement is, and will be, getting the solar turbine operational, and it's, by the way, running nice. And to follow through and have the sea winds turbine operational. I think that, that would be a huge achievement, and there, there are others. Disappointments, well, I think one disappointment is seeing Greg retire. I thought he was gonna be around for a while, so...
So what'd you learn from those, the achievement and the disappointment? Like, what have you learned from, you know, completing those turbines, or nearly completing? And then, learn from him?
The, the achievement would be realizing once again that I can do what I set out to do. And disappointment is the same as, as, if you're, when you're in the military, it's the same thing. You think somebody's gonna be around, you think they're not replaceable, but you find out that anybody can be replaced. The best baseball player can be replaced, you know, the best district can be replaced. And it, it's a disappointment to, to lose a, a good person, but you move on. And in, in the military, you do that all the time, people come, people go, and you just move on. You step up to the plate, and other people step up to the plate, and that's, that's the human nature. You feel it in where you need to.
Well, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
I can't think of any right now. I, I pretty much know y'all.
I'm gonna be an inside.
So, if you were hired as a general manager... So, um, if you were hired as a general manager, and again, this question, I think because you are an employee of Low Light and Power, um, staffing, what do you, in the near future, what do you see in staffing? Are we right at the number of staffing that we need? Do we need more staffing in different areas? Um, that's one question. And then the second question you can be thinking about is, um, once, you know, we're not there yet, but hopefully we are there soon, the biodigester being up and running and have the kinks, um, do you, and obviously you know that we have the option in five years after it's been, uh, operational to purchase that. Do you think that that is a wise move or would you advise the board against that?
Right now, I, I do believe that all the kinks will be worked out. I, I know that they're working on them and I know some of the kinks they have and I, 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 I feel that they cheapened up on the installation of it. And that's where they're running into problems. I think once they get the kinks worked out, it's going to be running smoothly. And right now, I feel that it would be good in five years or five years for the time that, you know, they're ready to, to purchase that. Now, my, my thoughts may change by then, but you know, that, that is something that has to be, has to be seen, but I feel right now it would be a good move. And as far as staffing, I think, uh, I think we could afford to hire, uh, a couple more people, hire somebody to operate the turbines. And I think that's all it takes, a, a good operator who can also do the maintenance. Because they'll be operational and that's, that's a, that's the biggest thing. So as far as replacing my position, I think replace my position with an operator and possibly another lineman. I, I'm not sure about, about the office staff yet. I haven't, uh, you know, sat down and see how they do business.
Obviously, um, you know, you're from the community, obviously you know that, um, uh, there's, uh, there's been unrest in the community with, uh, with politics, with, you know, what's going on. And, uh, um, what strengths do you possess that would help you, um, move towards any resolution of, um, conflicts between possibly between the board, this board and the city council? Again, we're appointed by the city council. Um, the, obviously the general manager reports to the board, but they also have to work, you know, we're, we're a community, have to work with the city manager and, and the council and everybody's got to live in harmony. So what attributes would you have and how would you, how, how do you see the potential and how would you resolve anything that could arise?
Well, I, I, I can, I can see the involvement there. I know we have to work together and I also know that there are conflicts. Now, now as far as, as, as some of the conflicts, I feel I could have, uh, quenched them before they became real big, such as this union thing, which is a, 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 a big thing that didn't have to be a big thing, you know, in my opinion. Because I, I, I've been in that field and I've been in this field and what everybody was saying about the union doesn't necessarily hold water. You know? Like, it, it's a good thing and it's a bad thing, as most things are. And, and I know that we have to work together, but I also know that I can step up to the plate and be legalistic and say, hey, you can't step over that line. Yes, we, I work for you, you work for them, basically. We all work together, but there's still certain lines that you don't cross. We make power. They have, they know nothing about making power. If more, a little bit of a, a, a involvement there and also what do I have to lose? My career is, is, you know, here, that's it. If I get fired, I get fired. You know, but I'm going to stick up for the best interests of the community, the best interests of the employees, the best interests of the board, and even the best interests of the city who may or may not realize it. You know, they may not realize that they get a lot of support from us. And maybe they do, maybe they don't. Maybe they have a vengeance against us. You know, it is, it's just certain aspects that, you know, I think, I think they can be worked out and I, I can see things now running smoother than they were. You know, I think you all did a, a good job of standing up to them already. You know, should I say that? Well, I'm, I'm not always politically correct, as, as one of our presidential candidates says, you know, I'm not politically correct, but I want to see it happen. And I, I think, I think we will, as a community, as different aspects of the community, we will be running smoothly again. You know, this, this, this union thing is behind us. We can't keep going back till we have to keep moving forward. We have to be focused on, on ahead, not behind. You look behind, you're not going anywhere. And we, as a community, can grow. We can, we can be the next place to be. Forward to Lowell.
I have no, I mean-
I don't know if you have more follow-up or?
I, um, facility, facility-wise, um, do you think, you know, um, the facilities that Low Light Power has, are they adequate? Do we need to do things differently?
Well, they, they're adequate for the time being. I think there's going to be, uh, some changes.
And what would those be?
Uh, I'm not sure. This is an old building, but it's been around, it's been burnt down, everything else, but it's still here. But it's, it's, uh, it may have served its purpose. I'm not sure. I, I, I can just see things being, uh, changed out a little bit. I think we're still a separate entity from the city. I don't see us in city hall. I don't think that's where we need to be. So right, right now, uh, this is, this is it, but I do see some changes coming. I can't necessarily say what, but they, there will be.
Okay, we shut up.
All right. Just I have a, I guess a follow-up. You had, you had mentioned about, um, when you were chief of security, that there were some, like troublesome folks, I guess, or the bad guys, whatever, that they kind of gave to you and said, make them useful.
Right.
How'd you do that? Like, how did you get them? I guess can you just kind of tell us that story of, of what happened?
Well, they, they were the, the ones who were always in trouble, but there's a reason for it. I treated them like they were people. I didn't treat them like they were, uh, slime balls or whatever you want to call them. They have different names for them. I treated them as people, I respected them, I let them do their jobs after I defined the jobs to them. And they would come up to me, say, hey, I did this, I did, all right, good, you know? I treated them like they were people and, and basically what I did. And most of those people went that way. See, I, 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 I've been, I've been there. I've been where they were. You know, I wasn't always there like this. Anybody who knew me back in the seventies, well, I was completely different. I, I knew all about that, that world, that aspect, because I was wonderful. So, and there was a reason for that. Most of these people just, just want to be recognized. That's why some of them dressed the way they dressed, with the color of hair, with this and that and everything else, all the bling and blang. They want to be recognized and that's the only way they can be recognized. If you start treating them like people, showing them the love and goodness that they deserve, which they hadn't received, many times they'll come around and say, hey, okay, there's nothing wrong with this. And that, that's what I did to those, to that group of, of guys. And they, they turned out, every one of them, they felt they had a reason again. Where before that, they didn't have a reason.
Awesome.
Okay. Pause for our questions. Or somebody else has any other questions? How many years were you in the service?
Twenty years.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess more just to curiosity, what types of ships were you on? Sorry, I just, I was thinking about the beginning, the beginning and I forgot.
Destroyers, cruisers and fast frigates.
Okay.
They were the, uh, at the time, they were the only ones with the, with the combustion turbines, the gas turbines on them.
Okay.
They were all gas turbine proportion and the gas turbine electrical plants.
All right.
And I was on every one of them.
At one time or another.
Pardon?
At one time or another.
Yes, at one time or another, maybe for a week, a few days, but each ship I had visited at least.
How many are those? Of those ships are there?
At the time, there were like a hundred, uh, it kept changing, 120 of the gas turbine ships.
Okay.
And now some of the bigger ships are going to, uh, to the gas turbine proportion. And also gas turbine powered electrical plants. Electrical proportion, which is also run by the, uh, gas turbine electric plants.
They, it's, it's, it's bay. I know there's some impressive boats, so.
Yes.
Well, thank you Doug Barnes.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Yes.
A different side of you than we've seen in the past. Very impressive.
Did you have any questions for us or?
Uh, I can't think of any right now. Just, uh, why are you interviewing anybody else?
When do you start?
I'm already here. I just changed my hat.
I, I, I liked your, um, about the, uh, turbines, um, in hindsight, yeah, that, you know, having two different ones. But again, we, we bought those at auction and got, you know, as compared to going out and spending the big bucks and having-
Right.
-two, a brand new identical one. So that's kind of the reason why, um-
Well, I, I know that reason.
Yeah. So, anyway, but yeah, it makes sense to have something to say.
We knew you could make it work.
That's right. You know, he, he just knew I was coming along. And, and, and when you all hired me for that, you didn't see the rest of it.
That's right.
No, but, you know, until-
I had no idea you had that experience.
Until you, uh, shared, applied and shared all this information with us, uh, yeah, I, again, I know Doug Barnes back in high school days, so.
I was not the same.
And your brother, and your brother, your brother Jim and I graduated together, so.
Yes. That's right. Well, thank you for, for coming in. Thank you.
Now back to work.
You might want to change first.
Thanks Doug.
Don't, don't let anybody in the warehouse, you know.
Make it look good again.